Greetings. Wow. I'd like to call the 29th meeting of the Mayor and City Council on Monday, April 24th, 2023 to order at 6:00 PM. Can we get the microphone down? All right, Mayor Moe will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Can we get the volume down still? Here.
Councilman Cole.
Here.
Councilman Sidnor.
Here.
Councilman Mitchell.
President Smith.
Here.
Mayor Moe.
All right. The next agenda item is a report of the Mayor and City Council, and I will start with Councilman
Good evening, everyone. I have to get my stopwatch started here. I only have five minutes to talk to you guys tonight, or I'll get in trouble. Okay, there we go. It's all going. Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilman DeWalt. This is my, uh, this is my agenda that I've done the last couple of weeks. Served, helped serve food, me and Councilmember Mitchell at Grace the Grace Church down on Bray Green. Probably over a hundred cars pulled up and they were, we were going to get, get them food. Then on Thursday, I handed out at Brighter Bites at Laurel Elementary School, 150 bags of fresh fruits and vegetables to the families of the kids that come to Laurel Elementary School. I still can't believe that we have to give out food in the year 2023. I want to talk about real briefly, because I only have four more minutes to go, real briefly about the, it seems to be a little disconnect as far as when we, we get a complaint from some of our citizens, we get a complaint from our, um, uh, employees and stuff like that. And I, it seemed to start with the rent stabilization bill where, you know, that eventually got cut off at Denise, but then the county came through with a rent, uh, stable, but stabilization bill that would affect the whole county. And then you look here and now we still have, what, about 20 of you guys from Public Works here, and all you want to do is get collective bargaining, unionize, which the Police Department has had quite a men, quite a few years now. So it's, it's already solidified into our Charter of Unionization with FOP Lodge 11, and that's all you guys want. And all you need is that one, usually it's just a one-page referendum attached to the city charter. And it's at least if we could get that done very soon, you guys wouldn't have to come to these meetings no more and fight for what you, what you deserve because of your hard work and everything. One-page referendum attached to the city charter, and it would at least give you a guarantee that you're going to get, or you're going to at least hear the city and the two sides get together and, and you get, you get, you get your unionization together. And you have, also have, I believe, over 300 signatures from our great citizens in the city supporting your, your referendum. Um, I also see some of my fellow constituents from the North Lake Homeowners Association who are, who are here tonight as a result of coming to my, uh, Public Safety and Transportation meeting on Thursday. Uh, there was about eight or nine of them there, and all they want is some sort of calming device, some sort of speed regulator on Oxford at Ashford because the, uh, the traffic has gotten so bad there and the speeds are, are, it's affected by them. I don't live there. I don't live on M Street. I live on my own cut through, which is Prince George Street coming off of Main Street, where just so happens a lady, 62-year-old lady stepped off right at 15 PG about over a month ago and got hit by a young lady going to work when all the kids were going to school. And I believe the last I heard about her, she was still in a comb up and shock trauma. And all I wanted was some sort of help for the seniors at 15 Main, which is the Selborn House, and they have a crosswalk in front of there, which the lights are way too low and people don't stop there. And these are senior citizens, just, just want to get across the street safely. And it just doesn't seem that they, that our voices are being heard to where you have to come here and you continually, after working a hard day's work, and you guys work very, very hard to come here and have to put in time sitting here, and it's almost, almost like you have to be begging for unionization when we already have it, and why, why do you need to keep coming here like this? And it's just a shame that we just can't give it to you guys, put it, put that referendum in and get it done immediately. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Next, we have Councilman Mitchell.
Yes, greetings, greetings. Let me show to the top. So starting the report, uh, April 13th, I went to the Casa Rent Stabilization Celebration at Casa HQ. It was, uh, very well attended and, uh, a lot of dignitaries there. Um, Councilmember Jolene Ivy, Councilwoman Walla Bagay, uh, also Councilwoman Crystal Oriata, and, uh, Councilmember DeWalt, uh, came as well. Uh, on April 15th, I attended the Electronic Recycling and Paper Shredding Event that the Department of Public Works had. It looked like, um, you know, it was a very successful event, and I heard, uh, a lot of people came by and, uh, attended. Um, I attended the Black Maternal Health Week, uh, event at the DePietro Center. And congratulations, uh, to, uh, Councilmember Sidnor on a successful event. Um, you know, there were a lot of good resources there. Uh, later that day, I went to the Selborn Committee One Year Anniversary at the Selborn House, um, and it was very, uh, well-attended by their residents there, and then also, um, Delegate, um, Tina Melnick and Lehman, uh, joined them as well. They were having a great time. Uh, on the 20th of April, uh, on the steps of City Hall, I had my announcement, Martin for Mayor. Uh, it was very well-attended, uh, by some, uh, nonprofit organizations I work with, uh, local community leaders from, uh, Laurel and, you know, all over the state of Maryland. Uh, later that day, I went to, uh, the Tippecop fundraiser, uh, at Famous Dave's, and it was very well-attended, and it was great, uh, to be there with the family, and, um, Laurel Police was actually, uh, the waiters that day, so it was, it was very fun. And, uh, um, the next thing, uh, I did a celebration at, uh, Cylon House, uh, which is in Burtonsville with, uh, some very close, uh, supporters. And then on the 21st, which was Friday, um, I met at Stan Lyon, I met a high school, uh, senior there with his parent, uh, to do another, um, suit giveaway. And, um, that was, that one was very, uh, very meaningful because the mom says she tried so many different places. Her son is six, seven, so she had to get a custom prom suit. And so, you know, Stan Lyon is hooking him up with a custom prom suit. And, um, later that day, I attended, uh, the 35th Annual 100 Black Women's Incorporated, uh, Prince George's County, uh, Maryland Chapter Gala, and that is a scholarship gala, uh, for college students, HBC college students in the state of Maryland, and it was at Martin's Crosswinds. Uh, on the 22nd, uh, I went to, uh, Rent Stabilization Rally and Meeting at the Martin Lodge, and I was joined by Councilmember at-Large Calvin Hawkins, Delegate Kim Taylor, and, uh, Central Committee Person and, uh, Chief of Staff to Councilwoman Crystal Oriata, Kony Serrano. I, uh, attended the Lars Community Fair. I definitely want to congratulate Lars. It was very well-attended, um, and, uh, I also, uh, saw, uh, the, the neighboring delegate, uh, from Anarundo County Delegate Mike Rogers, and I was able to meet a lot of good, uh, service organizations, not only in, um, you know, this side, but Anarundo and Howard County. Uh, later that day, I went to an anti-violence filming by, uh, Johnny Biggs at one of, um, the newer businesses, uh, in, on the Main Street area, Notes and Jokes. It was a film about, uh, gun violence and, uh, gun violence prevention, and, uh, I was also joined, uh, by Councilmember Calvin Hawkins. Um, so it was a very good event, and I wanted to highlight two upcoming things. There is a suit giveaway by the Braxton Legacy Foundation, uh, I believe it's this Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00. Um, and then also May 6th, I will be, uh, helping, uh, with the fentanyl prevention and awareness event at the Grace Praise, uh, Church International in Laurel, and they will also be doing Narcan Training, uh, and, uh, partnered with Pastor Paul Manor. As you know, um, the opioid epidemic, uh, is, is out of control, but you're hearing more and more about, you know, fentanyl. And so, uh, with that being said, I also wanted to end by thanking, uh, Laurel resident, uh, Jimmy Rogers on his words of support, uh, for Public Works, um, collectively getting collective bargaining rights. And, um, you know, stating that, you know, he moved to this city because, you know, he knew that this is a city that preaches their workers and the community right. And so I wanted to uplift him for, you know, those positive words to the council. Uh, that, that's the end of my.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Um, next we'll have Councilman Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone, and for those at our home, welcome to our council meeting. It's been a busy couple of weeks here inside the city of Laurel. On April 11th, I attended the Laurel Cats Kitten Shower. On April 12th and 13th here in the council chambers, I was the only elected official to attend the TEAC Special Event Risk Management Training. We hosted that from FEMA to talk about all of the city's large events that we have, but we were also joined by members from Baltimore City, Baltimore County, City of Bowie, different emergency response officials to look at all of our events to see how we can improve safety for our residents. Um, I was also at the Electronic Recycling and Paper Shredding Event on the 15th of the month. I worked with Kate from Public Works to help educate people on composting as they came into the facility. On the 16th, I went to the Islamic Community Center of Laurel's Ramadan Meal. It was my first time going to such a service. I'd never been in a mosque before, but it was a very educational event, and I enjoyed getting to know members of the community there. Uh, here on the 19th, we had the City Volunteer Career Fair in City Hall. It was great to see probably about 50 people come out, and at least all of the committees that I've talked to have got at least two to three people that have joined that night to, uh, come to the different events. This past Friday, I went to the Arco Iris Spring Festival. That's our only bilingual child daycare center here in the city. Um, very happy to support them. They're currently up to 47 students there. Saturday was Earth Day, which is a big day for me. Um, first I started at Parks and Rec at the Earth Day Cleanup at the lake. Um, then I came down here to the Main Street Farmer's Market Lot for Seeds of Change, where we did a native planting and education. I also attended the Lars Community Resource Fair, and then I got a brief time at the Family Time at the Town Center. For those that don't know, the Town Center has Family Time every few months where they have free fun, food and games, um, for anybody that, uh, comes. It was very brief because it did rain. We needed the rain for, uh, our current drought that we're in. Reminders coming up tomorrow night at 6:00 at the Sturgis Moore Pavilion, um, we will be having the Environmental Affairs Committee meeting. We're going to be discussing the plastic bag ordinance and the compost ordinances. So we're looking for feedback from the community, so if you don't want to attend a city council meeting, you can come and give feedback there. Also a reminder that next Sunday, Nomo April ends, code enforcement will begin, uh, checking lawns again on May 1st. There is rain in the forecast all weekend, um, and I can tell you that because the weather has been unseasonably hot, the grass is taller than normal. The pollinators have had what they need. You can go ahead and cut your grass now. I've already cut mine. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Um, next we have Councilman Sidnor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. On April 13th, I attended the Second Annual State of Justice opposedion by State of Turn Aisha Brave Boy. Also, on April the 15th, the Top Ladies of Extinction Protection River adopted Ronald B. Switzer Park. I attended that for ribbon cutting along with the mayor. Also, I attended DPW Recycling Event. Also, uh, Black Maternal Health. I want to thank the following individuals for coordinating the event, um, Janelle Softlake, uh, Sadija Smiley and Kristy Love. Um, Janelle Softlake came to me, I met her in the community somewhere in DC, and she was talking about her passion for Black maternal health. I was aware of it, but, you know, I wasn't really, uh, too much educated on it, so I contacted Mayor. We issued a proclamation to recognize, uh, Black maternal health month last year, when 2021 President Biden, uh, recognized and made a proclamation as well. So it's something that's, uh, very important in the community, people that came out, they were very engaged and they were very grateful that, uh, we did something like that in our community. Also, on April 15th at night, uh, Todd Delta Zeta Sorority here, a local chapter here in Laurel, they've been here for 20 years, and they've been working in the Laurel community, giving back to the community. And we partnership with them, the City of Laurel, partnership with them a couple of years ago on some Thanksgiving drives, some back-to-school drives, and, uh, just want to congratulate them on their 20 years of service in the community. And they also honored me with a Thrive Award. I was by the president. I was very surprised at that, but I want to share that with, with the Mayor and the City Council, the Laurel City Employees and all the volunteers that helped me out in the community because it's a, a joint effort. Even they recognize me, but I can't do this by myself, so, uh, to share awards, I want to thank the council and the mayor, and once again, the city employees as well. I'm Director, City Administrator Pulli, and Deputy City Administrator Barr attended that ceremony with me as well. And so, so I guess it's a joint award, so thank you all, especially my volunteers helping out throughout the community. And also, April 16th, I attended the last Islamic Community Center, um, they broke Ramadan fast, uh, so that was, uh, this is my second time attending there. And also just wanted to make a public announcement, um, a couple of weeks, well, about a week ago, I was cut, um, contacted by, um, Sarah Jackson. She's a CEO of Braxton Legacy Foundation, and she says she wanted to do a, donate some dresses and suits to Laurel High School seniors. So I contacted Principal Mr. Dinkins, said we identified 25 seniors and 25, 25 boys, 25 girls to, um, just going to collect dresses, going to get, um, dresses and suits for prom. That's the goal anyway, so, uh, we created a flyer that, um, you can drop off, uh, if you got new suits or gently worn dresses and suits, you can drop them off at the Robert DePietro Center on Monday through Friday between 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM, and on Saturday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We have boxes there and drop them off, and then the kids going to come, the 50 seniors from Laurel High School going to tend there on Sunday between 1:00 and 4:00 to get fitted for the, um, dresses and suits for the prom, for their prom. Their prom is on May 19th. That's a public service announcement. Ms. Braxton, she has some stuff, and she has some other organizations donating as well, but if anybody in the community want to donate, the boxes are there at the DePietro Center, uh, so please donate. I'd like to clear my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. For myself, I'll be short. Um, I attended the Prince George's County Municipal Association Meeting along with my colleagues, um, and the mayor, um, and I also was at the clergy board meeting this week, uh, which, uh, was, uh, well-attended, and I was happy to see a, a lot of the leaders, um, in the faith community, um, and I'm looking forward to working with them. And I'll move on from my report and go on to Mayor Moe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple, a couple of things. I did, uh, attend the Metropolitan Division Council of Governments Meeting, Board of Directors Meeting, which were members of. Uh, I want to thank, um, all the city, uh, employees for the recycling event. Um, we had many of them, but the recycling event, as you heard, started down at Public Works. I want to thank them for their hard work and, uh, making sure that that went off. Uh, that is something important. People can bring documents down, other things as well, so on the 15th, we started with that. I also had the opportunity to attend the Maryland Fire Chiefs Association, which was at the Laurel volunteer Friday pump, bring greetings on behalf of the Mayor and City Um, as you heard, the Islamic Community Center of Laurel, um, had their community neighbors' dinner. I want to, uh, thank them for the invitation. I want to thank them for all the work they do. They continue to do, um, uh, food distribution as well, and, and, uh, they've been working very hard on that, and, uh, want to thank them for that as well. On the 19th, we did have the Volunteer Laurel Fair. Again, I want to thank city staff, um, for putting that on, uh, getting the word out there and letting people know about different volunteer opportunities. With that, we had the Clergy Association Council, um, uh, meeting, um, last week. Were we able to talk and bring up issues affecting the community? I want to thank Clergy Association, uh, for the invitation to be with them as well. And then we had the Prince George County Municipal Association, um, meeting. You heard about the annual spring fest at the, uh, bilingual childcare center. Uh, you heard about the Earth Day Cleanup in Granville Gootie Park. I want to thank the residents and all the volunteers that came out. And then I was, uh, able, and I did get it across home plate, the Laurel Little League Opening Day Ceremony before the rain start, uh, was able to throw out the first pitch for them, and again, uh, thank them for that. The City of Laurel Earth Day Event at the Farmer's Lot, again, um, well-attended, and want to thank everybody for, uh, for putting that on. The Laurel Lab C and Referral Services, um, their, uh, Community Food Giveaway and Resource Fair. Can't say enough about what Laurel's, Laurel's does day in and day out. Want to thank them for that, acknowledge them for, um, their work. What they did over there will be something that we hopefully will see at the multi-service center as well. That same day, the Town Center had a family fun day, uh, again, before all the rain started, and, uh, was able to stop by over there and see some, uh, individuals and some of the businesses. Let me offer my condolences to Councilman Sidnor for being recognized, outstanding, uh, service to, uh, the community and to his country. The, um, a couple more things. Our Arbor Day Tree, Tree Planning, uh, will be at Discovery Park on April the 26th at 11:00 AM. On 11, um, on April the 26th as well, City Hall and the park will take place at Emancipation Community Park at 6:30. Uh, and then May the 6th is, uh, Lake Fest at Granville Gootie Park at 11:00 AM. Um, you also, some residents, uh, we are moving forward on one of our alleys, Alley Number Eight, moving forward with that, and Public Works, um, should be notifying the community there, um, about what will be taking place. The, uh, May the 1st will be, uh, the day that the public can, uh, come and get a copy of the, um, city's budget. I'm required under the law to provide that by May the 1st. It is balanced, there are no, there is no tax increase, uh, in that. And then, um, if you didn't notice when you came in today, uh, there is a new electric charging station, one of our first that we put up at our facilities here, uh, right out front. It's a Blink, um, station. Again, you need to download the, um, the app, and that's how you're able to, um, charge your, your batteries for your car. Uh, Mr. President, last thing I wanted to do, um, again, a lot of accusations, a lot of comments being made. Administration's been trying to work very hard. Uh, we have, uh, I asked the council for some input. I got input from four members of the council and feedback regarding the charter resolution. It is not a referendum. It is a charter resolution, um, and we also asked if they had questions for the attorney. Uh, recently, I was able to work with the others in the administration, um, and our labor attorney for the best way to proceed, uh, and prepare a charter resolution number 178, a charter resolution, the Mayor and City Council of Laurel Amending Section 300, Government of the Charter of the City of Laurel Amending Section 357 to allow collective bargaining for certain employees of the Department of Public Works. Some of the dialogue that we had was, should we write, rewrite, or should we add to 357? The real guts of this is going to be when we get to the Labor Code. Um, and that's where I think, uh, we wanted to make sure, uh, members of the council had the opportunity to talk to our labor attorney. And with that said, Mr. President, I'm asking that you allow Charter Resolution 178 be placed on the agenda for the evening, this evening's meeting of the Mayor and City Council. With your approval, uh, of adding this agenda to the agenda, it will allow for the first reading tonight in the general public hearing, and then it'll be followed up at a second reading and a second public hearing with possible action on May the 8th of 2023. Between these meetings, uh, members of the city council can sit down with our labor attorney, go over the process, ask questions. Since May, we will be, uh, working on the budget, and, um, I think, uh, from what I've read, most, uh, seem to know, uh, what they want to do. Um, a lot of comments, um, regarding, regarding this. Um, I'll ask the clerk if, if she would, um, come and get these. Here's two for the public. That's the memo. Uh, but I'd ask it to be, uh, placed on the agenda. Uh, it will allow, as you're well aware, uh, charter resolutions, uh, need to have two public hearings under state law. Um, so on April, on May the 8th, uh, we would be able to take action. It would require 50 days to, um, allow for anybody that wants to take it to referendum, um, and they have to get required signatures. That 50th day would be, um, it would be in, um, the actual, uh, charter resolution would go into effect. Then from there, uh, as we did with the Police Department, um, we did not add a new section. We amended the section. What we feel is the best way to proceed is when we start on the Labor Code, to actually take the Labor Code and make that one, uh, Labor Code for the city. And that will require some, um, some action, uh, by the administration to move forward with that, um, and then to, uh, bring it before the council. Um, I think it can be all said and done probably by October. I'm hopeful our attorney's in the back. Um, I haven't discussed that far with them, but I think that would be probably the best way to proceed. Mr. President, um, I'd ask for that permission, and then after that, once you've decided, I've got some appointments.
All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, please add it to the agenda on there 7.1.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of appointments. Um, let me start with Glendone Boyd. She is with the Board of Elections. We had nominated her for the Board of Election Supervisors. Glendone was there before on our Board of Election Supervisors. She left, she can't, had to come back to the, uh, she came back to this area. Uh, she was going to, and then, um, for some, uh, personal reasons, she had to remove her name, uh, today, so I took, have taken that name off. The, uh, Honorable Robert J. DePietro would be for the Board of Trustees, the Pension Fund. The, um, Jan Abel is resigning. Um, she is the chair. I need to find out also whether, um, the, uh, chair has to be confirmed by, uh, the city council. I'll come back to you all at a later date on that. Uh, Bob DePietro is a former mayor, and he also started the city's pension fund under his leadership as the mayor, uh, former banker and, um, a very good numbers individual. Uh, Jaclyn Ricks, Jackie Ricks would be a member of the Board of Election Supervisors, um, for Ward One. And then we've added because on the 17th, uh, Chrissy Cornwell, I'm nominating her for the Department of Community Resources Emergency Management, which this council just approved, and I appreciate that, and that's my nomination, Mr. President.
All right. Um, I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. President, I nominate. You want to do one at a time, or you want to read all of them?
them for the record? How you want to do it?
Um, you can do, uh, read them all for the record.
All right. Well, I nominate, uh, point, um, former Mayor Robert DePietro to Board of Trustees, uh, Ms. Jackie Rick for the Board of Elections, Christine Cornwell for the Department of Community Resource and Mercy Management.
All right. Can I get a second?
Mr. President, I'll second those.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mission carries.
My report. If anybody has a Board of Election Supervisor for Ward Two, I look for one.
Agenda item number six is the general public hearing. Um, and I will open the public hearing at 6:28 PM. And just a reminder, every, uh, speaker has a three minute limit. And also I'll call your name and please come to lectern to provide your name and address for the record. Um, Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm getting the, uh, sign up sheet now.
First, we have Lloyd Holloway.
There it is. Good evening. My name is Lloyd Holloway for the City, um, Public Works. I'm a Labor Two. And as I stated before, I was the one that reached out to McGO for us to get union, union rights and collective bargaining. Here I have an article that I want to read because I, it was written by me and is posted in the voices of Laurel. So we at the City of Laurel, Department of Public Works, put our best foot forward every day at work to provide various services for the residents of the City of Laurel. Services such as trash recycle removal, asphalt, tree work, sign repairs, painting the roads and road hot tape, leaf removal and special pickup of bulk trash and furniture, which I might add, we encounter syringe needles and bed bugs while we're removing this bulk furniture, which is very hazardous to us. Um, we're back. Sorry. I'm sorry. Hold me a second. All of the tasks that we do are dangerous due to the fact that we are literally out in the streets dealing with the traffic and putting our lives on the line every day. We are unsatisfied, uh, I'm sorry, we are understaffed and very much underpaid for all the work that we do, provide for the City of Laurel, which is why I reached out to the, get us unionized. I have the full support of the DPW employees to back me up and get what we deserve. We stand together as a unit and want our rights to be unionized and the rights to collective bargaining. The LPD has been unionized, so why not us? We all have a dangerous job and have families we would like to get home to every day to take care and provide for. It's hard to provide for your family when inflation has gone up 8.5% or you only receive a 2.5 increase when you get a raise. Not to mention, once you get a raise, your healthcare is increased too. So you're basically are seeing nothing when it comes to a raise. Also, our uniforms and boot selections are bottom of the barrel. We do not get provided with the proper rain gear nor winter gear to keep us safe, warm and dry. We are out in the elements year round and would like some gratitude. There was a day when it was cold and rainy in December of 2022 and the trash recycle team was soaking wet. Instead of us getting to go home after we completed our route, we were told to go back out and do more work in the cold and soaking wet clothes. I reached out to the mayor and explained our problems that day and his exact words were, "Why are you calling me? You shouldn't be talking to me. I'm not going to overstep your supervisor's decision." The funny thing is that it was the mayor's decision to keep us at work all day after completing our tra, our trash or recycle routes, which may I add is a lot of hard work and strenuous work. Now, how fair is that? In all, we're asking for the support of the council team and the residents of Laurel to help us to get unionized so we can get what we deserve, not only as employees, but as people as well. Thank you.
Next, we'll have John Berry.
Hello, I'm John Berry from UFCW 1994, and I've, uh, talked to you before on a couple of occasions. But, uh, mayor and council people, um, I just wanted to say, some of you were at the recycling event and I was at the recycling event too. What I have to say is based on my experience there, the citizens of Laurel overwhelmingly support unionization of, of them. A lot of the people that I talked to and I had the privilege of talking to, because I wish we had this type of service in Baltimore city. Um, a lot of them were very surprised that they didn't have the right to bargain. Um, and many of them were very appreciative of these people and everything that they're doing. So I think we're all united in that way and I'm glad to see, uh, and I've talked to every single member of the council and I know that they're all supporting this. I know that there have been, uh, you know, that there have been, there has been a lot of back and forth. They've been impatient, maybe. You might consider it impatient, but they've been waiting for a long time for this moment to happen. And so I will say, uh, you know, there are productive discussions taking place, but it's in the councils, it's the councils' turn now to act. And we know you support it, but let's see what you're going to do. All right. And we're looking forward to seeing a step forward and it looks like we're moving in that direction now. Thank you very much. And I'm going to, can I give this to the clerk? This is just a, this is.
Yes, you can. All right. Uh, we have no one else signed up to speak. Is it, all right, then I will close the public hearing at 6.
You close, can I speak?
Sure. Councilman Sidnor?
Yeah. I just want to say a couple of words before I, um, close the hearing. Like we said from date, I'm sorry. Gentlemen want to speak? You can allow, you can allow the citizen to speak first, Mr. President, if you want to speak on this issue.
Um, gentlemen, you can, you can come down and, uh, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Best and this November, my wife and I will have lived on Ashford Boulevard for 37 years. And approximately 11 years ago, I emailed the mayor twice complaining about speed on Ashford Boulevard. The response from the city was to install a traffic analyzer at the lower end of Ashford, right before the stop sign at Oxford Drive. I guess the, uh, result of that analysis was to install a sign in each direction that says speed limit 25. Now, last year, the city installed a solar powered blinking speed sign on Oxford Drive. Now recently I've read where the city's installing speed bumps on Irving Street, Olive Branch and Sandy Spring Drive. Laurel, Ashford Boulevard has got nothing. Now, my recommendation to the mayor and everyone on the council is to install a speed bump opposite each mailbox on the west side of Ashford Boulevard. That within a week will stop speeding on that block. I mean, gee whiz, Stevie Wonder could see that. So, I mean, we just need, you know, I've been watching this for 37 years. You know, what are you waiting for? Somebody to get killed? It's ridiculous. They use, especially during rush hour, that is a shortcut to 95 and Route One in both directions. You know, it's ridiculous. And I, I mean, speaking for everybody on that block, you know, we just want you to do something. I mean, talk to you twice, 11 years, send you something and nothing. This is, pardon me? You're going to find what? Those emails? You're going to look?
I'm going to, we're going to look for.
Please.
Let me also, um, just so you're aware, in the general public, the speed humps and bumps and elevated crosswalks that you brought up, those are a pilot program that we were trying. That, that's all they were. Tonight, there'll be a, a discussion regarding that and a policy. So if you hang around afterwards, the last thing on the agenda, that's what we're going to talk about as well. But that was a pilot program. That, that, that's just to see how they were working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Best. All right. And Councilman Sidnor, and then I'll go to Councilman Mitchell.
Yeah, I just want to say that from day one, you guys first came here on February 27th, um, brought your attention that you want to unionize. Um, I have no idea you want to unionize. I guess I don't need to know because you got to come before the council anyway. But there was some misunderstanding between the council and everything. We was trying to get everything correct. It's like a learning process for all of us. But once, we never denied the process. You guys organizing and unionizing, we just wanted to make sure some things was in place, my personal knowledge as well. And then as a courtesy, the mayor asked the council, can the, uh, can we extend, send each council member letter? And we, and we supported that. So as you can see, you guys get the first public hearing on May the 8th. That's next week and you guys start the process. So, once again, we never tried to deny you any of your process, any of your rights. I'm a union man since 1997. I have organized a union and probation officers in 2006. So, but it's a process the way you do things. And I'm always going to try to do things by protocol and that's how we get things done. Because once you start negotiating, you wouldn't negotiate with the council, you'd be negotiating with the mayor and see administration staff. It come for the council for the proof money wise. But that's why I try to stay out of a lot of things because everything got to come back before the council make a decision. I don't want to infringe upon anything. So I just want to clear that up. This council, I can speak for all of us, that we was never against a union. We just like to follow procedures best way we possibly can for the best interest of the citizens of the city and the workers of the city. So thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Sidnor and Councilman Mitchell. I'll let you talk before I close the public hearing.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, I, I appreciate seeing all my, uh, Ashford and, uh, Northlake neighbors over here. As I know, um, speeding has very much been an issue. I know I've had a conversation with, uh, uh, the Vice President of the Homeowners Association about accidents that occurred. And, um, it is definitely uplifting to hear the message about speed bumps and speed humps because I know that when we, uh, first discussed during the traffic study, when, when I first got on, you know, I was saying that I appreciate the traffic study. I know that we made sure to add more areas, uh, over there in Ward Two, uh, but I was a proponent of speed bumps and speed humps because, um, speed cameras, as we know, uh, speed cameras aren't the, the only way and they're not the only, um, you know, the end all be all. And I had mentioned some of the downfalls and pitfalls with, uh, the speed cameras. And, um, as far as, uh, you guys, um, coming and continuing to come, uh, to organize for, uh, your, you guys' union and be in the union, you know, I, I appreciate you guys and, you know, I appreciate you guys reaching out to me to, uh, continuously, uh, support you guys. One of the things that I would say, I'm, I'm glad that we're, we're moving at breaknecking pace now because, you know, as I said initially, and as you guys stated, this is, uh, something that you guys want now and want immediately. And so, uh, you know, I appreciate everybody for coming out and, you know, at the work session, I'll definitely have, uh, you know, a lot of questions around, uh, the collective bargaining, uh, agreement. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. I'll go to Councilman DeWalt. So anyone to speak before I close out?
I guess I'm a little bit different. Um, if I see something that needs to be done and is just, and the hard work that you guys put in each and every day. Um, when I first came here, I came from the United States Steelworkers and I was a, in a union for eight years up in Pennsylvania. And, uh, um, normally you don't need unions, but there's a reason for unions. When things aren't going well and you use, lose your trust in being managed and supervised, then the unions have to step in and they have to make it right. And you, you could see that. And right away, I'm not going to sit back at any time when I see that you guys are, you guys are faced with, um, hard work. We lost an employee, what, six years ago in a, in a terrible, terrible accident up on Sandy Spring Road. And, um, uh, you deserve it because of your hard work and everything that you do. And if you ever need anything else again, and I'm, I sit on this council, I would be, I would act the same way. Speaking about speed humping, speed humps and, and, um, speed cameras and everything, I, I would, I would put probably 500 speed cameras in the City of Laurel if it slows these people down. We have too many cut throughs through the City of Laurel. Um, especially Talbot Avenue, Montgomery Street, I could name them all. I, I've been to every single street, Oxford, Ashford Drive and everything like, like that. And with, uh, uh, Robert speaking tonight, I came here in 1985 when they were just building your community and stuff like that. And you could see what is, what has transpired in these speeding. And like I said, my neighbor actually witnessed, uh, she was sitting on her porch smoking a cigarette when that lady was, that 62-year-old lady was hit when the, when the, the children were going to Laurel Elementary. She initially thought because of the noise it made that she had another, she had a parked car. Then when she got up and saw a body, she thought it was one of the children laying there. And, uh, then later on, she finally realized it was an elderly woman who, who walks through our neighborhoods every day. I was, I was promised eight to nine months ago that something was going to be done on Selborn, uh, coming from the Selborn House over to the Quick Stop. Our seniors shop at that Quick Stop and it's very expensive there. And all they want to do is be safe walking across that street. And I heard, oh, it's going to cost $50,000 to fix that crosswalk. I don't care what it's going to cost. You have seniors living there. Seniors that have worked their whole lives at the Selborn House. They want, all they want to do is cross Main Street safely. And if it requires tearing everything up that we got there, the lights there are too, too light. They're not strong enough. The people don't stop. And had that young girl who made the right on Fifth Street that morning, had she been at, maybe came over a speed hump that would have been put there that I was promised eight to nine years ago, maybe that would have sunk into her mind that maybe I better slow down coming up Fifth Street. And maybe she wouldn't have been, whatever she was distracted from, and she would have seen that woman step off of that curb. And maybe that one, a woman might, might not have got hit. I can't predict the future, but I know those speed humps and a pilot program, there's been a speed hump in front of Lowe's for about 25, 30 years. And, and look at the people when they drive in front of Lowe's, they slow down. Go to any one of those, Olive Branch, Sandy Spring Road and Irving Street and stand there like I did for a half hour and watch the cars. It's effective. It's very effective and it's marked clearly. So in the wintertime, you'll be able to see this, where the snow and, and it won't hurt. You can go over it easily and stuff. They do work and they're very, very effective. They cost about $7,07500 per speed hump. We should be able to find the money somewhere in our budget in order to pay for those speed humps and make our, our communities safer. And I'm all for putting them everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. And I just want to say thank you for speaking. Um, uh, Mr. Best, I represent you in Ward Two. I, me and my colleague, Councilman Sidnor, are as representing you. We are in favor of speed humps, um, but there's a process and we're trying to work through to get through, um, to make our community safe on that side. So, all right. And I'll close the general public hearing at 6:45 PM. All right. And agenda number seven is second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 2009, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland, granting a non-exclusive cable television franchise to Comcast of Maryland LLC to construct, operate and maintain a cable system within the City of Laurel, Maryland pursuant of the, to the provisions of chapter five of the Laurel City Code and to approve a cable franchise agreement. Director Cornwall Shill, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, Council, Mayor. Um, we are available for any questions that you may have at this time. Kevin Frost was not ma, able to make it today, uh, but I can call him and get his answers on anything, uh, particularly, uh, specific. But we don't have anything to add at this time.
All right. Well, I read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 6:46 PM on it. Anyone signing to speak, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right. We'll close the public hearing at 6:47 PM. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve ordinance, uh, 2000, I'm reading glasses off, 2009.
All right. And can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mau. Motion carries.
All right. And the last agenda item that we added, item number 7.1, to get things rolling, is the introduction of the first public hearing on the charter. Resolution number 178, Charter Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the Laurel, Maryland, amending Article 300, Government of the Charter of the City of Laurel to amend Section 357, to allow for collective bargaining for the certain employees of the Department of Public Works. I read the title into the record for the first reading, and I'm open, opening the public hearing at 6:48 PM. If the council agrees, the second public hearing with possible action on this item will be on Monday, May 8, 2023 at 6:00 PM. All right, and I'll close the public hearing at 6:48 PM. All right. And Agenda number, item number eight is a briefing on traffic calming devices by the Department of Public Works. Director Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Smith, Mayor, and council members, and all the citizens here. I think this is a great day that the mayor has brought about. Mine will be to let you know that we do have a policy coming on speed humps, traffic calming devices, and a process by where communities can request this. So how did this come about? This started in approximately 2021, when we did the citywide traffic study. And what that study determined is what a lot of you all already know, is that there are places in the city where we should be looking at and putting in traffic calming devices. But there's got to be a process. What we also know is this, there's a term, and I don't want to get too technical, but it's called saccadic. Let's park that for a minute. And what that term means is that your eyes believe that everything you see is speeding a lot faster sometimes than it is. That's why we require traffic study and engineers to back up what you see, so that you'll know that what you see is correct, that we've put a lot of thought process and a lot of engineering process in what we're going to do. With that said, we have sent towards the city and the mayor's office, a traffic calming measures policy. And when that policy becomes effective, it lays out how you can request a study, how you can request traffic calming measures, the different types of traffic calming measures, and what we intend to do to keep this city moving forward and safe. The pilot program that you saw was for three streets. Why? And how did we get those three streets? The traffic study showed us that although there are several streets that may have issue, these streets were actually at the top of the list, not just by the traffic study, but by police reports, by state highway reports, by county reports. So we used a lot of data that we collected and crunched and said, you know what, this is where we're going to recommend that these speed humps first go to get started. This is, and I want to tell the citizens, this is not the end of the process. This is simply the beginning, as the mayor said, that we had to pilot somewhere and see how this worked. I can tell you, we've gotten overwhelming approval with these speed humps and how they've been, how they've worked so far. And we, it appears that they are effective, as the council members, the mayor, and others have said. So once that this policy becomes into effect, then you'll have a process by where each community can ask and look for the type of things they want. But I will caution you, speed humps are not the only effective measure. What you will find, if you look at traffic calming devices, there are several ways that we can calm traffic. And they each have their effectiveness to them. Some, for example, crosswalks that after we did the study that may not be able to be raised. There are other things we can put into place that are just as effective and just as calming. Over the future, you'll see in the city, for example, plastic bolage where we do what's called narrowing of streets, where we block the actual corner of the intersection where you all are tired of seeing big cargo trucks parked there. So there's a way to get that where you don't even have to worry about calling a police officer to come and ticket. There will be plastic bolages there that round out that corner so those vehicles can park there. So these, sorry, these are just some examples of what you will get in traffic calming devices and the types of things that are coming forward. This has been vetted. It has been chopped up in several ways. And I believe that when the mayor gives a go ahead with the council, that you all will be very pleased with this process. And I'm open for any questions.
Director Lee?
Yes.
So here we have the process. When do you, do you, do you have anything on your list now for, for Ward Two side from Laurel?
So, tonight, I don't think it's appropriate that I give you the exact streets, because I have not briefed the city administrator nor the mayor on the next set of streets. But I can assure you that the citizens will be pleased with what we're going to do the next set of streets.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
The, the study, the study's made public, right?
The traffic citywide studies have been out.
Okay. No, no, I, I, I've read. I just didn't remember if it was public. Okay.
All right. Councilman Cole?
I assume I know the answer to this. You just alluded to it. But it is in the budget for next year to put some of these devices in?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see that later.
All right. Any more questions or comments from the council? All right. Thank you, Director Lee. This is, uh, well, I closed the public hearing, but I'll open them back up for you. That was your chance to speak then. I'll open it just for you, though. 6:53 PM, I'm going to open the public hearing. You can come up.
My name is Maria Clifford. So my question is that what timeframe are we looking at? You, you discussed several studies that are going on, data being collected, et cetera. What timeframe are we looking at? And when can we expect to see something? And additionally, are speed cameras? And with that, not just speed bumps, speed humps, but speed cameras in the study?
Thank you. I can't answer for the speed cameras. Let me start at your last part first. So I, that's not under my authority to answer for the speed cameras. We are actually in the speedier part of the process now. The long part has been done. So once we go into this traffic calming policy, then once the, once all of the various neighborhoods say this is what we want here now, the shorter traffic study, what that means, an updated speed count, for example, an updated processor where we come out to the neighborhoods. And we've actually modernized how we count and the accuracy of our speed count, and the vehicle or traffic coming through that particular neighborhood. So that's, that's two ways that we do it. And then we can come together with all the other information we have. And we actually have an agreement with state. It's a little quicker. We don't always get it timely. But we do, along with LPD, county and state do get traffic data. State's usually the longest, I'll be quite frank. But since we sat down with them and created and cultivated a relationship, we do get that information a little bit quicker when they have the information. And so my last thing on that, some roads that are state maintained, it's not up to me as to what we put on there.
We looking at month, years?
No, no, I said we're in a quicker part. So once a process, so once anyone has applied through this policy, and let us know that they want us to come out, I could probably schedule that within two weeks. That's how short it could be. So hopefully, that's when we'll come out and we'll do the study. So that means the whole process, I would hope, will be wound up in 45 days, give or take. So that's how quickly we're looking at.
So in 45 days, some of us should expect the results? Or is that when the study is?
I mean, we want, I'm going to make it perfectly clear here. This is a multi-year process. This is an ongoing process with speed humps, bumps, and the elevated. There's maintenance issues. There's a lot of issues. What I think the director's saying is, when we put the policy into play, you'll be able to contact through the, I forget, Ryan, is it going to be your office?
Yes, yes, it's going to be our office.
They will come out, they'll do the research. They'll have to get an analysis. They'll have to do traffic studies, if we don't already have them, which takes time. And, you know, that's, but this is a multi-year, you know. I think you're going to see some every year. But I also don't think you're going to see speed humps and bumps all over this city.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. And when I said 45 days, thank you for that. I meant for that part of the process, meaning we could come out and put the pieces together for the study. But we have several streets in the city. And as the city grows, we're not, I'm not saying we're going to be able to do all the, all the streets at once, no ma'am.
Thank you for letting me.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Can you just state your name and, your name and address?
So I'm Giovanna Williams. And just to piggyback on what Maria said, is, do you have something online that for transparency, where you have outlined what the process is? So when we go online, we can see, like, exactly where we are? That, I think that transparency will help.
Thank you. Yes, this will go online once it is finally approved and implemented. Again, as the mayor said, this is just pilot. I don't have, I did not have the approval to put this policy online yet and make it. But that's one of the first things the mayor's directed me to, is to make sure this is available through our DPW. And you all have an opportunity to click online and see the process to have us come out to your neighborhood.
Thank you.
Can we get your address for the record?
Sure. 14050 Vista Drive, Number 63C, in Laurel, Maryland.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
I'm Charles Bell. I live at 8018 Ashford Boulevard.
80.
I'm president of Northlake HOA Association. Mr. Martin. I, I've been, I've been at this for a long time. I've been living on Ashford over 20 years. First request is speed bumps. And kind of first move there was like, it's a, considered an emergency route. And so that was out of the question. I still like pushing for cameras. I'm seeing this car. Can I show you these pictures? This car. This car, my mom's parked car, totally. 2021, I believe. That's the car that hit my mom's car. That's my mom's car. Totally. Thank God, no bomb was in it. The week prior to that, at the corner of Ashford and Cherry, another car was hit, parked. The week after that, my neighbor who runs a legal daycare, one of her clients was getting in the car, dropping off a baby, pregnant. A driver hit her car. A driver hit her car, kept moving forward, went to the code sap, came back, kept going. The weeks after that, I noticed on the other side of Ashford, across Cherry on Ashford, where the mall is and the school on that side, it was like almost every, at least every week for about three weeks, I saw a different parked car, like badly hit. So I've been talking to Mr. Councilman DeWalt, thank you so much. And Mr. Martin, I've been talking to both of them. A bunch of emails back and forth. So I thank you for responding. But I mean, like, this is like really out of hand. And the last thing I witnessed, a family, okay? So, so what's unique about Ashford and that community and Oxford Boulevard too, right? The lake is over there. So everyone, when it gets warm, everybody wants, the whole family, I love it. You know, I love seeing this. You know, it's one of the few communities I see where people just come out when the sun comes out. You see entire families walking to that lake. I witnessed a family, this was last summer. I guess they was husband and wife, I'll say, I'll assume. Two probably elementary kids. And the moms was pushing a baby. Car coming from Oxford, speeding up Ashford. And like, he had to see this family there in the middle of the street. He came within three feet of hitting this lady with the baby. Okay. And then was mad because the lady was in the street. And so, we, we also asked for, I know I asked, I reached out a few times, and twice I've seen you guys put up some kind of like, look like a camera box. Like, I assume it's monitoring traffic. I keep asking, what is the data from that traffic? I don't know what it is. But this is going to get ugly. Someone is going to get hurt and killed on Ashford. All right. And, and I'm, 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 I'm not, I'm going to be very upset. You know what I'm saying? Oxford, also right at Oxford and Ashford, that's a school bus stop. Okay, kids wait for that. It starts either from Oxford, from both ends it starts. But they come flying down Oxford, and that's stopping at that stop sign. At that stop sign, that's right where kids are. Wait for, wait for school. I even see school buses blow through that stop sign. I'm telling you, man, I hope that we're on your list. And it's a sense of urgency for that because someone is going to get really, going to get hurt really bad there. And it'd be a tragedy, man, because we've been crying for a long time. Residents in this area has been asking for something to be done about the speed. You can call Laurel Police Department. I've called them a number of times. They come out and they set up, I don't know where they set up at, where people don't see them. But they always get them coming from Oxford, going up Ashford. They pull them right over just about in front of my house. And I think they set up somewhere like 8:30 in the morning. They write tickets to like 1:30. And it's like, it's like by the time they stop a car in front of my house, go back down and set up again, here they come again. Right? So it's really out of hand.
Can you say your name again?
Sure. My name is Charles Bell, B E L L. Yeah, president of Northlake HOA Association.
All right.
All right. And so I just, I really thank you Carl for like, all your response. I've been getting it because we are really concerned. And trying to get, you know, maybe a petition or something for more of the neighbors to speak up. But everyone is concerned about the speed. And someone is going to get hurt. It's already been a lot of property damage. I mentioned all the cars. Someone all came through one about 2, 3 in the morning. This was just last year, I believe, too. Took off the whole, took out a whole utility light. Okay, turning off of Oxford and hit the, and I don't know, maybe they was drunk. I don't know. I just heard the crash. And it was like 2, 3 in the morning. And when I went out in the morning and walked down, I like saw the whole light, a utility light. This is solid hand, guys. Please don't wait till someone get killed in my neighborhood before you do something about it. Speed humps, I would rather see a speed camera, because we see the cameras. I remember Cherry Lane in front of Laurel High School before didn't have cameras, right? And how that speed was. And I know how it is now. You know, people obey those cameras. It's, it's a much different, if you, you know, if you've been up and down there, they show that street respect now, which is any street that has cameras and stuff on it. And it generates money.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Sure. Can, can, just let me get your name and, and address for the record.
Joyce Gibson, G I P as in pepper, S O N. At 7946 Ashford, where I've lived for 25 years. I have a picture of the corner we're talking about, where somebody came flying around and smashed into my son's car. We got it repaired. Her car was totaled. I know she didn't stop at that sign. And I walk every day, and I see people speeding. You want the pictures? His address is on the back.
I'll take it. Thank you. We agree. Thank you so much, Ms. Gibson. Is there anyone else wanting to speak before I close the public hearing? Yes, sir, Mr. Lloyd.
So I can vouch for all these residents that are speaking about Ashford, because in our Tuesday routes and our Thursday routes, while we're collecting trash and recycle, I've been on both trucks. And some of the guys that do those trucks full time, every day, are out there. Cars fly around us while we out there on the roads, trying to pick up that trash and stuff, not paying attention to oncoming traffic from the other side. You know, they have no regards for anything but where they're trying to get to. So what these people are saying is absolutely right. They need some traffic control on Ashford, on both sides of Ashford, for sure. And Oxford as well. Because it's bad. That stop sign right there with Chappaquodas, that does nothing. They run right through that. Yep, the California road real quick. So these people really need what they're asking for, for sure. Because it benefits them, but it benefits us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. All right. Well, thank you, Director Lee. I will close the public hearing at 7:06 PM.
Can I make one comment?
And I'm going to allow Councilman DeWalt to make one comment.
After being notified by Maria and Charles about three weeks ago, this is the same where they come down the hill on Ashford, and they make the left onto Oxford. And I got pictures of the person that hit this curb, went up over the curb, went through that person's yard, caused a big divot all the way through there, and then hit that geese sign, because the geese sign's not there anymore to slow down. And so he definitely had to have a lot of damage to his vehicle, but he must have drove out of there. But I do have pictures of that. And that's, that happened like three weeks ago, just so you guys know, to add to the list of the pictures and everything else.
All right. Well, we're looking into that for the community. And we're hoping to have some great results for you. As you know, or as you should know, As you know, or as you should know, uh, Councilman Zinnor, um, Council, um, Councilman Smith, myself, Councilman Smith and, um, Councilman Mitchell represent you on that side of town and we will be looking into trying to get something done. All right, there being no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is adjourned.